Joan.
Charles Long.
Here.
Mr. Mortensen.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manialito.
Present.
Kevin Mitchell.
Okay, thank you Joan, we do have a quorum, so let's go ahead and begin our business meeting and pledge of allegiance, uh, Michael.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeasimple of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, Michael, uh, let's go down to number two, approval of the agenda, board members.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve today's agenda.
Okay, motion has been made by Chris Mortensen to approve the agenda. Okay, second by Michael Shaw, roll call.
Ms. Manialito.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Okay, thank you, board members, go down to item three, approval of consent agenda items.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items, uh, it looks like number three A is all there is today.
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to second.
Okay, motion's been made by Chris Mortensen, second by Michael Shaw, to approve the consent agenda items, uh, roll call Joan.
Ms. Manialito.
Uh, I just had a question on this one, uh, were our employees ever in this, um, the part-time employees are part of NIPSA before?
Tim.
Javana.
Javana.
Talk a little bit about NIPSA and how that works with our staff, part-time, full-time.
President Long, Ms. Manialito, NIPSA qualifies, anyone who works more than twenty hours as a part-time and approved ability. As we move to the seven-and-a-half hour days, that puts some of our employees who were qualifying into the not qualifying category. And so in order to honor, um, our agreement to those employees for when they first started, that's why we're putting forward this agreement. It, it will not really cause the district any significant financial strain.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call Joan.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Thank you, board members, uh, let's go down to study circle, reports, uh, Mike.
President Long, members of the board, I'm gonna give you a quick update, um, as we've been doing each of the meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic. Just to give you an update on meals, as you know, we're delivering meals across the county. We are currently at approximately eleven thousand meals a day. SFE is currently applying, uh, for more funding to provide dinner, and we will notify the community if we are able to receive those funds, so that we're able to provide three meals a day. And we expect the meal count to go up above fifteen thousand in our community. So we're, we are excited about that and appreciate, uh, the service that we're, and the appreciation that's been given by many community members, uh, about that delivering of food. Um, we appreciate those staff involved.
Mr. Hyatt, excuse me, one second, why are we, why are they considering doing dinner as well? Is that a, I mean, that's not, is that something we were doing before, dinner?
No, Mr. Long, Mr. Mortensen, it's not something we were doing before, um, but given the current situation with students, uh, that potentially aren't receiving meals. Uh, we thought it would be better if possible to provide more meals, um, it also helps keep SFE staff employed. The next item, as you know, uh, since our last meeting, we have been working with Department of Health to, uh, essentially rent, and we'll talk about this later, an action item, rent Miyamira High School. Uh, to, uh, the state for their use as a step-down hospital. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but just want to let you know that they are currently working on that building. Um, as you drove in today, you probably saw air conditioning units going on top of the gymnasium. Uh, so the Corps of Engineers, along with their contractors, are moving very quickly. We have already turned that building over, uh, they have keys, um, and they are occupying the building as we speak. Third item, really quickly, I just want to let people know that we, we are doing our best to keep staff at home as much as possible. Approximately ninety percent of our staff, on average, at any time are working from home. Uh, we have about ten percent of our staff working physically in our buildings, uh, to keep operations moving. We're trying to be as slim as possible, and that, that varies from day to day depending on the need. But we have employees, whether it's administrators, cooks, bus drivers, maintenance, custodians, are the primary, um, categories of staff that are physically working at any given time. Financially, due to the COVID-19 virus, uh, we are in good shape, uh, we are still able to pay our employees and deal with the financial dealings of our district. As you know, there is an ASBO meeting this week, it's a virtual meeting, and we'll get the unit value released to us as we, so we can prepare for next year. Um, although the COVID-19, we don't expect that to cause too drastic a changes with respect to our finances. We also know there's a budget cut likely to come, many legislators have mentioned that in the media, uh, due to the drop in oil prices. Although those have risen a little bit, we're still hearing that there will be budget cuts for next year. We may hear some of that information at this ASBO conference, um, and I'm, I'm hearing that there may be a special session or a virtual special session this summer. And in, in preparation for that, we are trying to make as, um, many changes to create efficiency in the district as possible. While keeping or improving, um, our services to students. And lastly, I just wanted to make sure that the board knows, the community knows, and I've reiterated this each meeting, that we are following all safety precautions from the Department of, New Mexico Department of Health. Um, we are requiring social distancing guidelines, um, the, the personal protective equipment that we have, we are utilizing to keep things safe as far as, um, people-to-people contact or contacting of other items, uh, that somebody else could potentially touch. Uh, as you know, I mentioned in the last meeting, and this did, this did happen on Thursday and Friday of this last week. We did a complete wipe-down, uh, cleaning of all of our facilities, um, with our custodial staff, and they did a great job, we appreciate them coming in. Uh, so that we can, because we're gonna have staff in this week, more staff this week to prepare packets for students at the high school level, uh, for their distance learning. And we will also have custodians on a rotation basis just to keep the buildings clean, uh, keep, um, obviously bathrooms clean and things picked up and wiped down as more staff comes into the building during this time. We are also working with our contractors, we do have some contractors on site that are doing odds and ends, uh, to prepare for next year. And we are working with those contractors also to ensure that they are following all distance, uh, social distancing guidelines, and also using protective equipment when necessary. Any questions, board members?
Questions, board members?
I do, Mr. Hyatt. I just wanna say, um, hello everybody, um, thank you, board members, my colleagues for being here today. Uh, I had a couple of questions, uh, Mr. Hyatt, on, um, first of all, the meals, um, that we're giving out, um, to our students. Are they, are we still utilizing bus routes? And are they for, for all of the areas that are, we normally have our bus routes, sir? That's my first question. Um, my second question is, when we do, um, we, I understand why we gave Miyamira as a step-down facility to be used or utilized. We, I had some concerns from some members, community members on, on this, and when they are complete, um, with the, using the buil- building, uh, what measures are we taking to ensure that our students will be okay when they do return back to that school? And I think that, uh, I know there was some parents that were kinda nervous about that, I'm sure employees were also. So just to reassure their minds, um, I know it's a huge risk, and then also, um, the protocol that we're gonna have in place when, um, we do start school back up, um, is someone working on that? Uh, what are we gonna be doing, how are we gonna test staff and kids when school does start back up? And if, God forbid, if we do have a case from now till, um, this year's over, do we have protocols also in place on that? Um, what is, what is the, if you could explain, um, to our community members that are listening in and to ourselves as, as board members that we can pass on to our community and our constituents, of what's the protocol of our, our schools at this point, sir? Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Long, Mrs. Manialito, members of the board, as far as meals, and Mr. Bond can clarify if I, if I misspeak, but in order to accomplish this, this is a vast project, to get meals out across the county in a timely fashion, uh, with bus drivers and cooks and preparing those meals. And so what we are doing in order to accomplish that, because of the time it takes to stop and then pass out meals and then go on to the next stop to be able to accomplish that in a, an appropriate amount of time. We have bus stops happening around the, in the rural areas, anywhere from a mile out from the school that the meals are being located, that the meals are located at, or being prepared at, or where students can receive those in person at. Um, we don't, we're not stopping a bus just down the road within a mile from the, the facility. That gives us time to get out to all those rural areas to make sure that they're all served. So we're expecting staff, or not staff, but parents within that mile to have their students come to the school, uh, to receive those meals. So I believe as of last Wednesday, Mr. Bond, I think that's, or it was Wednesday or Thursday, we actually, we are able to reach out, I think Crown Point, one of the areas there, we fi- we're finally able to reach that, that route, which is our last route to, um, service. And so we are currently sending buses in all directions in our rural areas to, to send, to send food. In town, here in Gallup, every school is within a mile, um, of, of people's or students' housing. Uh, and so we don't have bus routes in town, only in the rural, most rural areas. As far as Miyamira and the safety precautions, as you'll see, and we'll talk about that in a minute with the agreement, uh, the facility has to be left, um, without, better than what it was. It's supposed to be left by the, um, state or whoever en- ends up taking over that hospital, or that facility, has to be left better than what they, the way they got it, at least. Uh, that includes sanitization or repairs of anything within the facility. We will follow all, they, they al- they already do follow, um, but we will also ensure that the Department of Health guidelines, CDC guidelines are followed to make sure that any facility is taken care of with respect to the cleanliness of it before it was, would ever be turned over, uh, back to students. As far as, um, testing staff and testing students as we come back to school, um, we have sent out information, I know that you've seen that information on our, on our website. Um, there is protocol, we've also sent out information to staff on if they feel they suspect that they, they, they have the virus and what they can do and who they can call to receive guidance on that. Um, we can, if we have, uh, if we know that a, a staff member, uh, that's an employee of the district, um, or a contractor, we, before they come back to work, we can ensure that they get tested. Uh, if we feel that we need to, uh, for that particular employee, we can also do that for staff, and this is per Mr. Sanchez, your attorney, who has let us know how that can happen. Um, if we have suspicion, we can, to keep, for the safety of other people in those facilities, we can require they get tested before they come back to, um, to work or to school. And so we will continue to follow the guidelines whenever we have an issue, we call the Department of Health if we're uncertain about a particular thing. That happens in our district, and we also obviously use our attorney in combination to make sure that we're being as safe and responsible as possible as we work through this, this crisis. Other questions?
Any other questions? No questions, Mike, but I think the, I guess you could call it a directive one, right? You know, it's coming from the governor that they use Miyamira.
Yes, um, Mr. Long, members of the board, I might as well talk about that right now, we're gonna talk about that in a minute, but we can skip that conversation since we're on the topic of Miyamira High School. So what, what essentially happened, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it was a Sunday before last, is when we were first approached to tour that building by the Corps of Engineers. Um, they toured many facilities in Gallup, I believe by directive of the governor, uh, or ask, they were asked by the governor to do an assessment of our particular area, and Gallup specifically. Army Corps of Engineers assessed several different spaces within Gallup, um, as a potential place for a step-down hospital. These were all ranked, um, that following week, we started hearing rumors that we were number one on the list as far as the most appropriate facility for a step-down hospital, uh, being Miyamira. On Friday night, or actually about Wednes- oh, I think it was Wednesday evening, uh, Thursday morning, um, I put our attorney in contact with the Department of Health attorney. Uh, because there was a request that this facility, uh, per the governor, uh, she announced, I believe on Thursday, that she, that she wanted to put a step-down hospital in Gallup. Um, during that time, we were negotiating with them to create an agreement to protect our district and our students and our staff, um, given this request by the governor that, to use the hospital, or this is, this next door facility, Miyamira, as a hospital. It's, it's complicated, I'm not an expert on how the government works when there's emergencies, um, but I have also heard that there's potentially that the hospital gets taken over federally by FEMA. Um, which has a whole different set of criteria or ways in which that happens during an emergency. We're fortunate that we ha- do have a facility in Gallup that can be used to support our community, uh, with the expectation that there's going to be an excess number of people affected due to the COVID-19 epidemic, or pandemic, and so, at the same time, we want to make sure that we're protected. Um, we don't want student dollars going to this facility, uh, that would not be an appropriate use of funds. Uh, so we want to make sure that agreement was done in a way that protects everybody, uh, yet gives the governor the ability to do what she feels she needs to in this emergency to protect the citizens of New Mexico. We understand that it's a sensitive topic, given that schools are being used, while we suspect and have heard that we are not the only facility not only being considered, but also being used, uh, on the, on tribal lands and also in the state of New Mexico. Some people have asked whether it was our choice to do so, and I guess if you look at what the public health needs of our community, um, could we have fought this, um, and, and, and gone that route? Uh, we probably could have for a period of time, but I believe once the federal government gets involved, they have the ability to effectively take over facilities as needed. I am not suggesting that we would do that, given the situation that we're in in our community, and I think it's a benefit for us to be able to help, but protect our students at the same time and our staff.
Yeah, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, you know, while this building, uh, the high school is being used as a hospital. And God forbid, you know, if anybody should pass away in there, uh, I've talked with Mike on it and then our attorney that if that should happen, there would be a traditional, uh, ceremony to cleanse, uh, the building before the students go back in. I, I think that was one of the, um, comments or questions that was brought to my attention, so we've, we've included that in, in the reuse of the building after the virus goes away, whatever.
Right. Members of the board, we're hoping that it doesn't get used at all, that would be ideal. I'm sure the governor is just, um, has an expectation there may be a high number, and the hospitals locally can't handle those, many of those patients. Um, so what it basically, as of right now, we've been told, a step-down hospital is essentially, those non-critical patients could be housed at Miyamira in the gymnasium and potentially later on in classrooms. Uh, but critical patients, uh, patients that are in ICU, for example, those would still be housed at the hospitals currently. So the most severe cases would be at the hospitals, and the step-down means it's a second level of care, um, not emergency care. So obviously, we also hope for no, no deaths for, for anybody, especially in our school buildings and other places. Um, but yes, if we, as needed, we will provide those services to make sure that everybody feels comfortable going back in the building.
Ms, Mr. Long.
Yes.
Actually, actually, I'm gonna say the Navajo first, then I'll translate, um, or Mr. Long can help me translate. Actually, I need a quote in the top of my heart, I need to, in China, China. I call, I need a quote, so I go, I, I need to, so I go and the, I, I'll, I, I try to, I, hey, I see. At the city that he does she. So this is an illegal she by yet eight of the. To alchian. Kona, yeah, and to Jihiki, bin yeto. Um, in general. Who's you? Do. Um, in China, they don't leave. Um, I didn't get a chance to all the. So I. Saying it in English, I think. The best way I can say it is. The either way, I think we should still have. Um, a ceremony done just to cleanse everything when we. When it's over. Mr. Long.
Yeah, so. Uh, Mike, I guess Priscilla in her comments. Brought up the idea, you know, whether. Um. You know. If a person dies in there, whatever. Or even if it doesn't happen. Uh, the spill, the building needs to be re cleansed. Uh, maybe bringing in a medicine man. Uh, to perform. Uh, a ceremony to cleanse the building. You know, maybe, uh. Making sure that whatever's in the atmosphere. Is addressed and gotten rid of.
No problem. President Long, members of the board. This was, this, and I don't want you to think that this wasn't talked about with the Department of Health also. Um, as the consideration was given for the use of this facility. And so we did have those cultural conversations and the impact of that. And I think it also should be understood that President Nez has been a part of these conversations. Uh, from the Navajo Nation. Um, he was actually here, we got a short notice, but he showed up and actually came to visit the facility also this week. Um, and so we know that the Navajo Nation is concerned about the community also. Um, again, we are not the only facility being considered. Uh, as far as being used, and I suspect that as we move down the road. Potentially other facilities could be used within our district or neighboring districts and not only here, but also in Arizona. We will continue to use the proper, our proper chain of command with respect to how we see. The government secures those facilities. And we're working through the Department of Health for any future recommendations or considerations of buildings.
Other questions? Then. I should go to Anna to Heshnet, Priscilla.
Well, yeah.
Um, the. Other thing, uh, is that. Uh, our council delegate, uh, in our area. Has been doing conference calls and. Uh, I got our superintendent involved in that, so he provided some. Good information, and I think Priscilla was on the line at the time. So he's, he's involved and it's unfortunate that. Other superintendents in other school districts. Were invited, but nobody came on the line, so. But I think we're. Sort of like the trailblazer. In this whole process and during my, the time I got on the conference call. Uh, the other day, I mentioned to chapter officers that were on the line. That we want them to. Uh, uh, share with their, the, the parents and students that they need to update their information with the school district. So I think that would probably help our district too.
President Long, just one last comment before we move on is about on that topic, we have been communicating with lots of different entities. Um, I've been on several calls with the Eastern Navajo Agency and able to speak yesterday on that call. I've listened in on the other times, uh, at least for part of those meetings, but, uh, we've been working with the fire department here in town, emergency hospitals here in town. I was on a phone call last Sunday with General Clark with those entities who oversees this particular hospital for the Army. Um, or who will oversee this hospital for the Army and is coordinating activities. Uh, so it's, it's a pretty vast. Team effort. Um, it's not just within our communities. But also external communities and across the country and entities that are helping us in our community, so. We'll continue to communicate. As needed and as much as possible to make sure that people are in the know and that we're working together to get things done for our citizens.
Any other questions, comments? If not, let's, uh, move on. Um. Notices and communication, you can, uh. Uh, just ink them in your calendar. Our next meeting is on the twentieth. So let's go down to new business, new business A. Mike?
President Long, members of the board. We are bringing this action item to you today. Um, after a lot of thought and consideration, given not only the financial situation of the district. Um, and potential financial requests from the state or budget cuts in the state. But also, as you know, several years ago, there was an effort to consolidate schools within Gallup. And we created Del Norte to consolidate Wanda Onate and Washington Elementary. Uh, redrew some boundaries. We also built Lincoln to a certain size to accommodate Roosevelt, the closure of Roosevelt. Um, and move boundaries again for that area. Jefferson was also built, Jefferson Elementary was also built to a certain size for consolidation. Um, as a result of that, given that, um, there are so many spots left still in Jefferson. Um, in an effort in a few years to consolidate Rocky View into that school. Um, or potential other boundary changes between Indian Hills and also the new building Red Rock. We felt that it would be appropriate at this time, uh, given the situation that we are in with potential looming budget cuts. Also, Mr. Bond, let him talk about some of the other details, but also with staffing projections and things like that and recruiting during this time when COVID-19, this pandemic is upon us. So I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Bond to give a little bit more explanation of how he came to this decision. And some of the factors that led us to move forward with this sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Mr. Long, board members. Um, as Mr. Hyatt has said, we, we've talked about this a little bit. Um, over the last year or so. And about six months ago, we began to look at how we might be able to consolidate, consolidate just part of Rocky View. Um, into Jefferson, and part of the reason was because. Um, the building at Rocky View has many challenges. We have a lot of roof leaks, we have all kinds of, uh, HVAC problems and things like that that were going to cost us a lot of money. And we had been talking about at some point when we finished with, uh, building the new Red Rock. That we would then have enough, uh, room between Red Rock and Jefferson and Indian Hills to go ahead and do this consolidation. But as Mr. Hyatt said, with the shortfall that the state's going to have. With budgets. Um, and you've probably seen the paper, they're predicting anywhere from. One billion to two billion dollars if they're going to have to figure out how to cut out of the budget. We began to talk about how we might be able to save some money in the district. Um, before this all came about in January, we had already had our. Um, boundary company come in and look. And I actually held two parent meetings with parents at Rocky View. Um, we had already changed the boundary or were looking at changing the boundary. And moving about half of the kids out of Rocky View into Jefferson. There's somewhere around 285 kids, um, at Rocky View right now. And we had looked at sending about 135 to 145 of those kids to Jefferson. And so we had already held parent meetings with, with the parents involved in, in those, uh, with those students. And there really was not any challenges that, uh, any of those parents brought up, and in fact. Um, when you move from an older building into a newer one, most of the time, parents are fairly happy about that. The only challenge that we really had were there were a handful of parents who said things like. You know, I have a fourth grader that's always been at Rocky View, I'd like them to graduate there as a fifth grader. And so we were going to go ahead and accommodate some of those things. But now with the, um, budget cuts, uh, and the possibility of a special session. Um, the executive leadership team started looking at, was it possible to completely close Rocky View? To help save us some money there. And so as we had our boundary, uh, group begin to look at that. We found that we could possibly move most of the kids, and if you see this map, I can talk about it just a little bit. So there is one apartment complex just across the street from Rocky View. I believe it's called the Casamara Apartments. There's about 30 kids in that apartment complex that are elementary kids. And so the proposal is to have those kids go to Indian Hills. And there is room at Indian Hills for about 40 to 50 kids. And so that's going to fit fine. If you look on the other side of the map, there's an area in red there just past the green, um, where Mark Avenue and Verdi Drive is. So in, in that area, there's only about 20 kids. And so those 20 kids, uh, with the proposal would then become part of the Red Rock Elementary School this next year. And then all of the area that's kind of in the tan there. Um, those kids would end up at Jefferson. And so if you look, there's a page, uh, it's probably like the second to the last in your. In your packet. Um, there is a page that looks like. This. And it has some green downwards numbers are. And if you look at that, so the, the numbers that are in green, um, actually show what the projections would be with this change. Now, Indian Hills is actually not highlighted, but you can see that Indian Hills capacity is at 325. And this year their enrollment is 268. With the change, it would become 292. So that's within, um, the capacity of Indian Hills. If you look at Red Rock, so Red Rock this year, their capacity is actually over 400. Um, Red Rock has only 321 kids and it would go up to about 340. With this change. Um, Jefferson is the one that we're just a little concerned about, but their functional capacity is 593. And their program capacity is 563. What that really means is the difference is that if every. Classroom had exactly the number of kids it's supposed to have, we could put 593 kids there. We know that's not always going to work out, it's going to be somewhere in, in between there. But with this change, we would be at 568. Which is what, about five over the program capacity? I mean, again, these are projections, and so we would still allow parents to put in transfer requests out of their schools if they. Needed to do that or wanted to do that, so we anticipate it being a little less than that. Um, but the proposal is to go ahead and make these changes so that we can be prepared when the special session happens. And that if there are budget cuts, that we will be in line with trying to make sure those things happen and do not affect, um, our ability to educate children. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer those.
Let me add one thing. One thing you didn't find in your packet was there's a recruitment aspect to this too. This year, we are finding that, um. We're having difficulty getting people to apply for jobs, and I'm sure that's the case across the country. Um, given the COVID-19 situation, people are kind of hunkering down, which is understandable. Um, so less people are moving around with respect for new, respect to considering new employment. Uh, we, we are expecting that we're going to have much less people applying for positions in our district. Um, the staff that are currently at Rocky View, by, through the consolidation, we could better meet the needs of our students. And those other schools also at this time, there's another piece of the urgency. Uh, if we continue to keep that school open, we're going to have, we're going to have a bigger hole and not be able to service, likely be able to service students as well. Um, with a licensed teacher. Um, and also potentially having to have larger class sizes than we may need if we have these extra teachers that we can use to fill spots in the district. Uh, I think it's very important that the community knows, obviously the staff knows at Rocky View. This will not include, this proposal doesn't include any staff being terminated. Uh, from their employment. We will, we have already given out letters of intent to staff. We already know who's coming back, they will still have a position in the district, and we'll do our best to keep them as close, uh, to where they're at now as, as possible. So I just wanted to add that piece.
Sorry, with, with, uh, we've already looked at that just a little bit. And probably about 80% of those staff can fill positions that are open right now, just from retirements and resignations. And we anticipate the other handful will be able to fill positions, um, as well.
Questions, board member?
One question to him, um. The students living in the apartments here at Orleans. Were they going to Jefferson and now they will go to? Red Rock?
Yes, I actually missed that on the diagram, sorry. Yes, those that are in Orleans Manor. Um, that would become part of Red Rock as well. There, I'm trying to remember how many students there, it's really not that many that are elementary students, somewhere between 12 and 15, I believe. Um, that are in the apartments right here. So yeah, those would become part of Red Rock. And of course, we would change bus, um, drop off and pickups to accommodate all of those changes.
Board members?
What are we gonna, I'm sorry. President, um, Long. Um, sir, what are we gonna do with the building? Um, after this year? Just be boarded up, closed?
President Long, members of the board. We have some ideas of, of potentially using that facility. As you know, our central office and our, our facilities are kind of spread out all over Gallup. Um, there's a heavy, heavy. Toll on Boardman right here with students coming into JFK and also Miami Mira High School in the mornings. Um, while we also have our transportation department on the same road trying to get in and out and getting students to school. Uh, so we may look at our infrastructure as far as where we're located and potentially use that facility or. We could potentially even demolish the facility. Um, but there may be some options to use that facility to become more consolidated, so we don't have. Central office staff all over the place. Um, and that we can take a, potentially put transportation over there or, or else on the property at least. So that we can alleviate the congestion that's happening here on, on Boardman every single morning, which is. A big stress, not only for those students and those families. Um, but it's a result of the way the state decided to design this road out front. Has really caused us even more problems when they said that would actually help. Uh, and so we're, that's another, there's several little issues that it could resolve if we're able to move transportation, maintenance, those types of things away from this particular area. Uh, and keep some level of consolidation for those departments.
And the reason why, sir, I was asking too, is kind of that same aspect. Of like our EDC building downtown. Um, I don't know if that's our building or if we're just renting that. But I think also it gives more space to, um, those kind of programs that we have in our district.
Yes, Mr. Long, Mrs. Manulito, we have also thought about that. All, all areas, all departments that are not located in this building. As potentially relocating them, it could be on that site, it could be in that building. Um, some sort of consolidation so that we. Have more efficiency with respect to the facilities that we're using. Uh, but also be able to get people out of high congested areas, our staff. Even that area can be fairly congested when we have so many vehicles in the parking lot behind EDC. There's really not room for staff and vehicles at this time. So getting people on a location that's a little bit more spread out, a little bit more room to house appropriately, cars, buses, facilities. Um, that may be an option too, to, to relocate EDC.
So Mr. Bond, one question I have for you is. Um, what were the major concerns of the students or parents, even staff, for closing down the school?
The only thing, again, I held two meetings, um, and it was, it involved about 150 students. But the only concerns were, there were two parents that talked about fourth graders wanting to graduate. Um, as a fifth grader at a school that they'd been at. Um, and then there were a couple of parents that talked about preschool. Um, and pre-K. Um, but those were the only concerns that we had, and I think we can, uh, make sure that we solve those problems with this change.
Any other questions? Uh, just one thing, I guess.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Uh, in terms of, uh, closing the school and all that. Uh, in terms of, uh, dollars, I guess, are we going to be, um. I guess. Spending money on it, you know, to. Close it down? What's the cost involved?
So President Long, members of the board, um, there's not, there's not a cost to close it. But we want to make sure that if we, if, if the, the choice is not to demolish it. That we preserve it in a way that it doesn't become a money pit also. Uh, as Mr. Bond mentioned, there's several things in that building need to be repaired. As you know, we had some severe water leaks. Uh, last winter, the winter before. We do have some roof issues. It's going to take some capital dollars to keep that up and running. Um, but there may be some opportunities for other funds if through consolidation that could help us do that without tapping into other capital dollars. Uh, and so. The costs are really savings in staff. Staffing is significant. Um, as far as it's a, I can't remember how many teachers there, but we're probably talking over 50 staff that could be used to fill positions in the district. That otherwise may not be filled. That might cause other, it kind of dominoes, uh, depending when you don't have a teacher, when you don't have. A proper working facility, there's so many things that can snowball into higher costs for the district. Consolidated as much as possible is more efficient, we can provide better facilities, we can keep up on those facilities better. Uh, and so wherever we can, I think it's good for the board to consider some levels of consolidation. I think Gallup in, in town, there's been. Several schools that have been consolidated, and I think we're getting close to as efficient as possible currently. Um. But, you know, it's always something that can be on the board's mind, there's ways in which we can. Save money and still provide better, as good or better services for students when possible.
Okay.
Mr. President. Um, do we have, um, do you have any type of projection, estimate, estimate of how much we would save by closing?
That would be, we could, we could put that together, but if you, if you think of staff. Um, Jevon, I know you don't like me to use rough numbers, but if you take administrative staff, if you take teaching staff and you take. All the different staff in that per school, let's say it's 50. 50 people. Um, and you say it's an average of, uh, $40,000. Uh, if you multiply that out, that's, we're getting into the millions of savings. Just in, just in salaries. That doesn't include maintenance, that doesn't include the roofing that it needs, that doesn't include the, the plumbing. HVAC system that's struggling right now, that's going to be a significant investment. Um, we also have, if you've been there, we're having, we're struggling with keeping just, the way it was constructed was not the best. So again, we have a few facilities in the district where. Because of our si- financial situation and working with the state, they don't always give us the dollars nor construct our buildings appropriately. And we pay for it in the long run because we have to replace roofs sooner, or we have to replace, in this particular case, stucco sooner or HVAC systems or roofs sooner. Which is an added cost that they are not paying for. As you know, we've asked for waivers for different buildings and they won't give it to us. Um, they, they think we have all this money, which we don't. Uh, because they don't want to give it to us. They, they talk of equity, but they don't, they don't actually walk equity with respect to treating schools the same and across the state. And so we, the more we can become consolidated and efficient, the, the cost savings are there. So we could put together. Some specific numbers of what it takes to run the facility. Um, you could almost break it down by, I mean, if you figure that we have close to a hundred million dollars in operational and we have 34 schools, you're talking an average of three million a school. Close to, rough estimate.
Thank you.
Chris?
Uh, Mr. Long, uh, I'd like to make a motion and we approve this item five A, um, as it's written in the agenda.
Okay, motion by Chris to Mortensen by, to approve, um. New business A, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Mitchell. Rook Hall-John.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members, we approved this. Uh, let, uh, let's go down to new business B. Approval of a continuous learning plan. Mike?
President Long, members of the board. When the closure occurred that the governor announced initially. Uh, the Public Education Department. Gave out some different messages, but. Basically that they would like us to complete a continuous learning plan. They did say they do not need board approval for that continuous learning plan. We did not feel comfortable with that. And we have updated you on what our plans are for distance learning and continuous learning for our students in the district, and we talked a lot about that last meeting. We basically put what we have discussed with you into this document. And to submit to the state. But we feel legally that it's important that you are the ones that. Take action on any type of curricular. Submission to the state. It is your local control that you, you were elected to have local control. And when an emergency is announced, it doesn't mean that the laws go away. They are still in place, we are still accountable to those laws. And so we, as a district, feel it's important that our leadership, our school board takes action on this particular item. And we actually put, added to the document on the first page and referenced the local control that you have to make these kinds of decisions. This also includes grading. Uh, the state initially said that we would give pass fail grades only to students. In an equitable, in an equitable way. Well, there is not, it's not possible to give pass fail to students, especially at the high school level equitably. Uh, you are going to punish those students. And so we put together a plan that we believe. Does the least amount of harm to students, it gives them opportunity and does not punish them for something that they had no control over. And so I'm going to have Mr. Horace come up. He's going to go over some of the details, um, him and his team, along with others. Put a majority of this together. We went through and vetted it as much as possible to, so that we can provide continuous service to students. Uh, but I want you to have a little bit more detail from Mr. Horace on this particular plan. And because you're going to approve it, we're going to send it to the state today if you approve it. I guess they can approve it or not approve it, doesn't necessarily matter. This is your distance learning, this is your continuous learning plan for your students. And we tried to do it as equitable as possible, and the state's method was just not equitable for our community.
So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to, rather than going through the document word for word, I'm going to focus on. What we're doing, and then you can ask questions if you want me to go deeper on. What we're really doing for our students in pre-K through 12th grade. And I think the key piece is. We focused on equitable for our students because a lot of our students. Do not have access to the internet and they do not have access to a computer. So an online learning platform is not equitable. Because if my child has that access and yours doesn't. That, that's just not right, it's not okay. So for grades K, pre-K through eight, K through eight specifically. We are sending home. Learning packets in English, Language Arts slash reading and math. And it's, it's not new work. And it's not. It's, it's basically to help them hone their skills of things they've already learned. And we have a note going in there to the parents of how they should use that packet on a daily basis. And, um. With directions on how to help their students. So every child will receive that in the mail. Um, I believe we're going to begin sending out portions of that Thursday and Friday. And then the rest of it, our goal is to get it out next week. For K through eight, for ELA and math. And once again, we have also provided those K through eight students. In a letter that Mr. Hyatt sent, we sent a letter to every K through eight parent already. And it tells them what we're going to do, and it also has online resources for their children if they want to go above and beyond, or if they have access to that. So that's the K eight in the plan.
Mr. Horace? If a child does not have that P O box anymore. Like what Mr. Long was saying earlier that they changed mailbox. Is there a way we can send information out saying maybe those packets could be available at the school site?
So can I jump in real quick? One, one plan we have in place is any, so we sent out letters to every student K through 12. And we're getting some of those back because it's a bad P O box. So our Stars Department, Lori Clark, is taking those. And if it was a bad address, she is going to try to contact that family. Whether by phone or email to get an updated address. So we can send out the packet to them. And as of now, we have not received as many back as I thought. I bet it's. My, my guess is I saw a stack today, less than 50. That's pretty good, but that's our immediate process because we want to avoid having people come. Near the schools. So we're going to try to catch those individuals that way, and then we'll see what's left after that to have the next step. Um, but once again, we've sent out 11,200 letters. And as of today, I think we have less than 50 returned so far.
And that's what we're excited about is. Phone numbers are not. phone numbers are not consistently accurate. We probably have close to average of two thousand numbers that are not right because they change, the numbers are being changed. Email, obviously not everybody has email or the technology to get information. We, we eventually came to the conclusion, we have to do this by mail to create some level of equity across the district. And then if other, and then provide resources if they want, if they have technology, they want to use that, they're welcome to do so. But we felt the mail process was the most equitable way to get information to parents. And then as you mentioned, Ms. Manuelito, there are going to be some that are wrong, Mr. Horacek mentioned that, we can deal with those less of an amount. If we were to do phone calls or text messages to come get something, we would have less people informed. So, we're excited that less addresses are wrong than, than phone numbers.
And we have also put the, I don't know the exact name of the form, but it's the form that you use to update your address and phone number, we've actually, Lori kind of revamped that and we put it on the website. For parents in case they see that, if they realize they have the wrong, because we've had a couple call and say, hey, I've got the wrong address on there, I want, I need to update my information, so we've put that on the website. The other thing is I want to talk about the grading piece for middle school. And the parents, the parents know this, but every middle school student, every K through five student, so K eight, will be promoted to the next grade. We are not going to penalize any students for something out of their control. The only way a student can be retained is if the parents choose to do so at this time. So any question, any, any questions on the K eight process or pre-K eight process?
Questions, board members? Go ahead, Gerald.
And the last piece is we're not asking for the students to return any materials in K eight. It's just to support families in this difficult time, because we also have to be conscientious of the fact that, because I can guarantee you, everyone is, every one of us in this room, this is a hard thing to go through. And we have to look at the structures of our families and our extended families, so we want to be really cautious about what we're asking students to do at home, and also at the same time providing some educational experience. Nine through twelve is more complicated. But I believe that we ended up with a really good process. And I do want to share one of the things that I think we did well, is we told all principals at the very beginning, do not do anything until the district can figure out what we're going to do. Because I can assure you, there are districts out there where they basically told their principals day one, just get something done. So you have principals and teachers in other districts doing their own thing, and guess who's confused? The parents. And it is really, really frustrating, so we are trying to avoid that by having a district plan. And it's actually worked out pretty good at this point. So, for high school, nine through twelve, we set up parameters on what our high school sites could do. And so, all subjects that a student has right now should be sending home some type of work for a student. So if they have math, English, social studies, PE, just give an example, they're going to be receiving a packet next week with, we call them deliverables, we're not going to call them assignments. Because we don't want to think that a student's going to be doing an assignment every day. And what we did for nine through twelve is the, the school sites can do, per student, three deliverables up to seven. So if you think about it, with seven deliverables, that's, that's basically something from every subject. However, we also encourage sites to do this. Why wouldn't social studies and English do something combined? So that that's one less deliverable, but they could get grades for both subjects. And so there's guidelines, and so what we did is we pre-stamped envelopes for every single student and a return envelope for every single student here at central office. And we're shipping those out to schools today. So they can start putting packets in those and mailing them home. And we put guidelines on what can and cannot go in there. So, students in nine through twelve will be returning work if they choose to return the work. And I do also want to stress that we follow the CDC guidelines and the DOH guidelines on how to handle any packaging we do, and so we're wearing gloves. We're frequently washing our hands or using hand sanitizer for any document that we have created to be shipped out to parents. We're also putting a letter from each principal, it's a preset template that's going to go in each packet explaining to students what they should be doing with that when they send it back in. And on the grading part, no student will be penalized grade-wise at nine through twelve. So if they choose not to do the packets, their grades will not go down. If they choose to do the packets, their grade will go up at least one letter grade, potentially more. So, if you have a seventy, well, I don't even know what the grading scale is, I've been out for such a long time, but let's say you have a sixty-nine and that's a D. If, if you do the packet and you meet the minimum criteria, you would go up to a seventy-nine, it's a ten-point increase, that's a letter grade. If you meet a little more of the criteria, and I'll talk about that in a minute, then you could go up two letter grades. So it's going to be an opportunity to improve, not decrease. So if I do the work and I have a seventy-five and I turn in a subpar work, that teacher cannot lower my grade. Does that make sense? It's only for grade enhancement. And the teachers are required to put, we call it a rubric, but they're required to put in there that if you want to improve your grade technically this much, this is what a paper should look like. So as an example, let's say that they say, we want you to write a two-page essay, I'm just throwing this out, and you write one paragraph. We have some guidelines in there for what, how that would be scored. Because you don't want to give someone a two-letter grade bump that just did one paragraph, and then a student that did the whole two pages, the same amount of growth. So we put some guidelines in there, but we are going to err on the side of caution and give students credit through nine through twelve. And then the last part I want to be clear on for high school is credit recovery, we have students in credit recovery that need some credits to graduate, that have been in courses right now to, to, so outside of their seven classes, they're also in credit recovery. So those students that have access to technology are continuing to do credit recovery online through a program called Edgenuity. But we are also making accommodations for students who don't have access to computers to also gain that same credit recovery credit through a mailed packet. And so that's how we're taking care of that piece. Anything to add, Mr.?
I would, the only thing I would add is, we obviously have dual-credit students that are working with colleges on their courses. We will follow the guidelines of the college who gives those grades. And so they're on a little bit different schedule. In addition, I just wanted to mention that, again, no student will fail during this, these, this semester. They'll get an incomplete if they do have an F, and we're actually going to extend another month for students to get their packet in so they can replace that incomplete with a letter grade and get a passing score. The state had asked us to extend until June fifteenth. I believe approximately the middle of June, we're going to extend that another two weeks just to make sure we have time to get everything impossible from students. Given the situation, for example, if we can't get a packet to somebody, you know, we have a little more time to get it to them, to give them that, that opportunity and not rush them. Also, I just want to propose one scenario, and we know the Public Education Department, all of us are on a different level of stress trying to get this done. But if, you can only imagine if we just gave pass/fail grades. So I'm a freshman, I want to go to college, I want to get some scholarships, maybe I want to be the valedictorian. And I receive a P on my report card all the way across the board. They just get, it just essentially gets credit. So if you think about what that looks like for that particular freshman when they apply in their senior year or whenever to go to college, when they have Ps on their, their report card. The GPA is then mixed up. Other states may be putting letter grades, and then how do you compare a P to an A that another student was able to gain? So you can start, if you start thinking down that road, it becomes very complex. And that's why we felt this was the most fair, equitable way to give students an opportunity to improve and to not punish them so that they don't miss out on opportunities, not only this year, but in their future, as those, those grades carry with them throughout high school. Any questions from the board?
Questions, board members or comments?
Mr. Mr. Long, thank you, Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Horacek. Do the McKinley Academy students also get the packets?
The McKinley Academy students, Mr. Manuelito, or Mr. Long, Mrs. Manuelito, they are actually doing work, like their grade cannot go down either. It depends which student you're talking about, you have dual-credit students, who those students are working with the college. And we have other students, because they all had equitable access across the county to technology and internet, we let them be kind of a pilot moving forward in looking at ways in which they could do online instruction with those students. But they fall under the same rules, their grade cannot go down from the third quarter grade if they don't turn in the work. They will still receive at least that grade, so they won't be punished either.
My last one is just a concern on the work that will be returned back through the pre-stamped and the envelopes. I think we can need to continue to take the precautions needed and just reminders to the staff that will be receiving those envelopes back.
Thank you, and we, we do have those precautions in place. The, kind of have a paper protocol. That actually includes not only sending, but receiving those documents that protect, PPE or protective, personal protective equipment is used not only in the sending, but also the receiving. And if you go back, back here, you'll see Beebe with gloves on and she's been receiving and sending, and she's, she's using some of those, those PPEs to make sure that we're being as safe as possible, keeping our staff safe and students.
Kevin?
I have, I just have a question about the incomplete. So if the letter grade is changed from an F to an I, and then they still don't turn in anything by the end of the June thirtieth deadline, does that incomplete just go back to an F then if we had to do a grade, or what does that?
Currently, that's what we're proposing, yes. We're going to give them three months to do, it's not a significant amount of work, it's fairly minimal but appropriate level of work. We're trying to give them every possible opportunity within even an extra month and two weeks on top of what PED required. We don't want any, there, there should be no reason, when you see the packets, that any student shouldn't be able to fill that out and not get an incomplete. And so, I think what will happen is we'll see some students that may still have an incomplete later in the year, and we'll be watching for those to make sure that we work with them to help them get that packet in, if we provide other supports, we will do that. In addition, we all, we are obviously continuing with our special education services. They're providing services individually to students to provide for their needs during this time too, and we have a, we have that moving forward. IEPs are still taking place, and so our principals are focused on seniors, initially, all students but seniors to help them get graduated. And then we're going to have some students that still need some extra support to get their packet in. And so, like Mr. Horacek said, we're being as lenient as possible to try to give students every opportunity to increase their grades. And, and if I could just use one more example, even a student that has a zero will still have an opportunity to pass.
Mr. President, you know, I see this as a great opportunity for our students, especially those who may be failing three or four classes at this time as seniors.
Absolutely.
To graduate with at least a D and, and pass or whatever, if not higher. Are we putting this on the radio to let these parents know that, you know, let's, this is an opportunity that should not be missed out on, or, I don't know?
The, the letter that went home gives some brief overview of it, it's not as detailed as what we provided you, we wanted to have you approve it before we send it out in detail. That's the reason why we created this document, to help guide what information goes home so that they know what's being expected of their students and what's going to happen. So the letter pretty much explains that for K eight, for example, no student's going to fail. That they're going to be promoted unless they choose to keep their student back. High school, we want, we had to have a little bit more time, we have sent the letter home. High school letter's already gone home, is that accurate? High school letter already went home, but we'll provide more information just to make sure that they understand. Now, we could go on the radio, we didn't talk about all the different avenues, but pretty much everything we've been doing has gone through website, text, links on Facebook, whatever it might be, but we could also do it on radio. I'm not sure we talked specifically about radio for this particular piece, but we can do that.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say one more thing that I think is really important, because I've seen some other areas throughout the state, but having your all support, I'm talking about the board members, makes this doable, because it's a really, really, really stressful time, I can assure you, on our end, to meet the needs of eleven thousand two hundred students with an individual packet. And so, you have really helped with that process and Mr. Hyatt by just supporting us students and asking really good, informative questions, thank you.
It's been interesting, several districts have, have looked at what we've done and have adopted it in their own districts after they've thought through it, so.
Board members, what is your?
I would like to make a motion, we approve of a continuous learning plan.
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Shaw to approve the continuous learning plan, is there a second?
A second, Mr. President.
Okay, second by Chris Mortensen, Rock Hall, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, thank you, board members. Let's go down to new business C.
Mr. Long, members of the board, we've already had a fairly detailed conversation regarding the conversion of the Miyamira into a hospital, or a step-down hospital. This is just the agreement that Mr. Sanchez and the Department of Health's attorney worked out that gives us protections and also gives the opportunity for them to use the facility. So, do you have any questions?
Questions, comments, board members? If they're annoyed, let's take action on it.
I would like to make a motion of the approval of the agreement between Gallup McKinley County Schools and the New Mexico Department of Health for the use and conversion of Hiroshi Miyamura High School for a hospital per the New Mexico governor's decision that it is the best facility to serve the surrounding area during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, motion's been, been made by Michael Shaw to approve this agreement, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Kevin Mitchell, Rock Hall, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes, I just have one more question, Mr. Hyatt. So they will have their own staff in that building, right, all janitors, everything? They'll be taking care of that facility on their own from here on?
Correct, Mr. Long, Mrs. Manuelito. The only thing that we're providing is if there is a structural problem with the building, our construction maintenance department could potentially work with them to address the emergency need of something like, whatever it could be with the facility structure. Since we are leasing the facility, we have some responsibility to make sure things are done appropriately. In addition to that, we will have security that watches all of our facilities at night. It'll be to a lesser degree in that facility, because they'll be occupying it twenty-four hours a day, it'll be open twenty-four hours a day. But we will have security that will look at it from our location here, and also we have maintenance, transportation, construction on the, on the south side of that, of that property. That we'll have security there going behind the building, probably to both sites to make sure that there's no vandalism and such, like we do at all schools. Other than that, there would be a possibility, we, we believe the hospitals are going to provide the food service, but given that our food service provider is a contractor, they could potentially reach out to that, that contractor. As far as custodial staff, it's explicit that we are not using any staff to clean, any of our own personal staff to cook, or anything within, within the site, at all. They will have to provide all of that themselves. We felt that it was, we had to be really careful that we're not using student dollars for this and to keep it clean, that separation just made it, that, that, made it that much better to make sure that we understand each other's role in this rental agreement.
Okay, maybe the Army Corps of Engineers can help us address the structural deficiency.
Well, as you can see, they're putting units on top of the building as we speak, as far as air conditioning for the, for the gymnasium.
Yeah, I think they're good at doing projects like that, so.
They're pretty competent, yes.
Rock Hall?
Rock Hall, Joan?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, thank you, board members. We approved this agreement, let's go down to new business D, Mike?
Mr. Long, members of the board, this last item kind of goes along with our continuous learning plan. If we're going to do grading a little bit differently and not to punish If we're going to do grading a little bit differently and not to punish students, given the situation, it was appropriate, we talked to Mr. Sanchez to make sure, the best way to go about this, and that was to currently suspend the current grading policy outlined, that gives us the flexibility to, for example, not to have, in our policies, says two grades per week. Well, we're just not going to be able to accomplish two grades per week right now, it's just not, it's not reasonable and not appropriate. And also, in addition to this document that we provide you, we want to make sure that we don't, we'll stick to this and not have to have it mixed with a policy that speaks differently, or is conflicting with this particular message that you approved today. And so it's simply just a legal, important thing that we do, that we waive that particular policy, so we can move forward in working with our students to help them get graduated and help them progress.
Okay, questions, comments, board members?
Um, Mr. President, I just have a question, um, once we get all our grades situated and everything at the, toward, at the end here, what are the plans for graduations? If any?
Mr. Long, members of the board, as I mentioned last time, that is to be determined. We will have some form of a graduation, we hope it's in person still, and that we can do that at some point. If not, then we have to look at other virtual types of ways of providing a graduation for our students. We're particularly concerned about them. There are lots of ideas being floated around of what other districts potentially are doing. I think a lot of districts are still thinking through this, with the hopes that something changes, that we can have a physical graduation at some point. I know some districts, I heard, they've moved their date to August 1st, or something like that, for their graduation. I think we have a little bit of time to make that final decision of what we want to do, or we may have multiple graduations. We may start out with a virtual, and maybe we'll have a physical one later on. We may even have proms in the summer, for all we know. A lot of students have missed out on that opportunity too. It might be a little more complex, a little more complicated, but we know our staff will step up and to meet the needs of our students, and to do all we can not to have them go through anything further, or miss anything further that they've already missed.
Mr. Long, I have another question, sir. I know that one of the things that we're really looking at also on Navo Nation is the mental health aspects of all this, and I think a lot of our students will be impacted emotionally, either by their family members' illness from this, or even a death from this virus, and I think we need to continue to have that, our, our staff that, and beneficial in behavioral health and mental health, to either do some more awareness, contact informations of where they can get assistance from at this time, if they are in need of assistance. And I know you mentioned IEPs and continuing to follow those, so I think on our next meeting, I would like updates on both of those, our mental health, and then also special education, to what are we really doing to help our students in those two areas, sir? Thank you.
Gushy, thank you. Priscilla? If there's no further questions, need a motion and a second?
I would like to make a motion, approval of the suspension of the Gallup-Mckinley County School Board grading policy 1-6711, IKA-R during New Mexico governor's declared school closure for COVID-19.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Schaff, second by Priscilla Manuelito, to approve this suspension of the grading policy. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members, I believe we've completed our business for today.
I would like to make a motion of adjournment.
Okay, motion's been made by Michael Schaff to adjourn the meeting. Second?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Second by Chris Mortensen. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
214.
Okay, we're adjourned at 214, board members, yeah.